We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need to turn on the mic.
Well, hopefully they heard us all in the news in the first place. Thank you. Everybody good? Okay, thank you. It's been moving in second to accept the event that stated, anybody need to add or remove this thing? Alright, then all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
And okay, so three point O visitors to address the board. This is a type of public comment on none. Any of you guys really want to address this over there? Okay, everyone is good. Alright, then we will go out to four point O, new business review, the high school construction updates and options. I'm assuming and trying to learn using. Okay, what are the Scotts?
So. It appears that we're passing the board to be very excited. A lot of work on many people's parts, and so I thank them, take our community, for the ongoing support. And now it's our job to figure out how forward we can go. As much as as can. So I've got some things I want us to review. I think I can go through the process and hopefully we miss entirely. Yeah, and you know, this is a planning session, so it's not more like meetings, so we want us to be informal as question.
Rainstorm.
They, Jared, on any question, say third, which is, which is okay. I want him to join us. He's, he's a facilities guy and knows details. So what I want you to use, to take one of these drawings and pass around.
Thank you. Yeah. Though we have this kind of online seminar, so we could.
So we should do those. Okay. So what's important to remember that what we're going to be talking about is priorities to complete the high school construction project, not just that they're leaving. All right, we passed the bomb or areas we're going to be passing the bomb, we can't say we passed, but we certified for the total days. We're not looking at the priorities just in that bomb. We're looking at priorities for the overall project. And I'll talk about that in a little bit, but the one thing that's important to note is what we're looking at right here. Passing the bomb allows the completed at most speed without making any additional changes to it. Now, the caveat for that is we are planning on a anywhere between four and six billion dollars of contingency to help help complete that. If that contingency is used in other areas, then that eats into the eight million dollars that we just passed. But we also have other options. We've got interest from, from the money that we've already generated from bonds that we can help move towards and will help move towards the project. We have property that will land on selling to help supplement. And if we need to, when this all said and done, and and feel like we need to add some additional things, we have the option of alone. To complete. So this, that is important to understand, we're looking at the holistic big picture, not just right, this past bomb, how still we have. It, it likely will be more than we want, and I share that because we're going to prioritize about twenty-four different items, and those twenty-four different items total somewhere between eighteen million and nineteen million dollars. So we won't be able to do everything, however, we need to prioritize everything. Because there are ways that we might be completing items that allows to do the next one on the list. Right? So an example of that might be like, yeah, that's something that we want to upgrade. What does that look like? Does that do painting carpet and seating? Does it include a portion of that? Or it includes all of that? Is it replacing all the seats? Or is it recovery of seats? So there's lots of different options to get the project done, and they have different prices. So we need to be very careful as we're making our slash on how we can do this project. Another example is Columbia City, so we use faster dogs to complete the cooling in Columbia City as inflation and supply chain and everything else to practice. If that project, we initially started with, we're going to have cooling in the entire building, and then we shifted it, so it would have cooled last year. So we make those adjustments to make the most out of our money and get as much done as we can. Another example, this one I know is hot on everyone's mind are the turf fields. So this is. Yeah. And I meant to.
We don't buy here.
But let's start on letterhead, but intergated to replace that format. So here are two different models of addressing turfing the field. We could possibly just turf the softball field and the varsity field as they sit. We can have some estimates on that, that is option, which one it says two on your key. We do that really often, there's a title. Two point three to two point five million dollars. This one? Yeah.
The dark friends.
And then this, which incorporates. That one, it's on the back side of this. So our plan is to do turf to fields. I'm sharing the example because we've got a million dollars between two of these. We have multiple ways to get it done. We also have a partnership with the city where we may approach them and have some conversation about, gosh, if you want to have this backup to your, you part correct facility, then maybe we can work together and get it completed. So what I'm trying to just kind of share is focusing on the dollars and cents. Isn't going to be productive right now focusing on the priorities that you want, and then it's our job to try to figure out how far we can get down that priority list. Alright. Questions so far?
Only like in the detail. Wait, because you can put two options here and softball has not had a field that they've wanted in a while. They may want some of these options in this option, just to get it done in stage one, if we're only doing that stage. But I feel like there should be an image.
I'll say. So, go ahead. So I'll start back with this. This is the project that we're completing. We're moving forward with this, so I'm cautious. I don't want you to feel like that started with the last one, alright? With, with themes, we can do some moving around, and that's when the dollars and cents change. But we need to prioritize what direction we want to go, so we can start coming down and getting those. So absolutely, yes, we can do that. We can mix and match, or just change the dollar figures.
So the softball field currently, the right field fence is just too short, exactly. With the for, is it, is it, it's okay?
It did not approach on there.
I was gonna say, otherwise, all you really have to do is put a on right field for a way to put a tall fence, you know.
Oh, you could raise the fence and you have the same, the field actually, you have to separate it on the part of that because they pushed it out when they want to go to that area. Yeah.
Actually, I'm looking at this, right?
Baseball stewards, the baseball.
You both. Oh. These are softball or baseball.
This is saving here.
It's that we're not seeing a football field on this town as well. Right, but this is normal softball, and in this picture, softball is played here, right?
That's correct. So in the
That's why.
More expensive softball. Yes, and well. It's kind of a combination. Believe that this, this second option right here is the better option of the two. Simply because it eliminates the problem that is the mud pit of an upper soccer field, which all of you in the audience know what I'm talking about. In the fall and spring especially, you will step out there and your foot will sink in mud, and in the drier seasons, you will be running or walking and your ankle will twist. So it's that field up there is, as a dirt field, is a safety hazard for our athletes. And it's just a hassle to try and walk through or even run through. So I think this option with this synthetic turf field would be the safest route for our students.
One thing I have to keep in mind is for the marching season practice, we're going to fit on this because obviously they can get marketable in schools, so and where they're at in Ohio State is just too small for the show. That's I don't like, it's a, it's a really small plan, as you, you can have a look at the guns.
What would you tell me? Yeah, these are just, oh, it's got, this is, yeah, obviously, but I'm just saying that.
These are brainstorm still. Push your rally.
Well, that's why. Yeah, which is temporary. I play a soccer player. The only thing that's, that we're not really, I'm trying to move back. Yeah. Before we started on, we need to. Okay. Alright, we can come back. Okay.
But in the worst part, then she passed.
Right, and so my air, let's hear it, sharing the handout tour. Yeah, just say, just state the example. One is two point five million, the other is three point five million. So focusing on the target dollar is not going to be super helpful because you're going to get you're going to feel like there's not enough money, which there never is, but there's always a way. And we just got to figure out the best way.
Right, so I have a question.
We may have.
For convenience, and the other things that we have and are actually general. I would like to compare the two point five lighted versus this not lighted. The reason being that there's one of original compromises was that instead of four fields, we have two fields and make them lighted. And the argument was that that increased utility and JV can play on top of varsity. Varsity can play after JV and flighted, and then we're not limited by daylight and all these crazy sprint things and having to get out of school at ridiculous hours, and you'd say, no, we play our games at five or six o'clock in the parents' house. And they're lighting, and I don't care if it's, if it's in the March, it's playable and it's after dark, and we have the elite field and we can do that, and so the lighting is there. And that may actually sell more than than the, you know, soccer can also practice in a somewhat limited area. They don't always have to have a full field. I practiced an awful lot of football on the last twenty yards of a football field. In fact, mostly that's where I practiced, and that's what soccer is doing too. That's why those holes in the turf. But, but reality is that you don't need, you can make a short pitch for soccer practice. You can make a half pitch in the outfield for soccer practice. They're not playing a league game there. They play the big games on the infield. But they can go short pitch, and they can get all of their work done, and I, it's, it's like everything else. You can do it. Marching bands can work at a small spot and then go out on a big field. It's, these things are doable. And you can mind it. There's a lot of things that you can do, you know, it doesn't, they don't have that full football game to do marching band. They can, they can go eighty yards or sixty yards and they'll be fine. And if they don't like it, well, the parking lot, that's where they started here. So I, I hate to be so practical, but the reality is that there's things we can do, and I just think that the lighting option is one that needs to be on the table, so that we're comparing all the benefits. And the other thing I look at is proximity and how you get there. And this, this combination right now, if we have the fire lane, for people to at least walk or take their motorized wheelchair, they can get, can't they get to both fields if, if we had turf out there? Could, could, could this be accessible? Could we put a walkway for it? Yeah, we can make, from, from, from the fire lane, we could make accessibility issues. And you can, maybe be accessible. It could be accessible at the top. So there's things that you can do. Take this and maybe make this, maybe there's something in between. Maybe we can make this one of these just a little bigger, or this can extend off this way a little bit, have a little more room in the outfield here that's, that's so during offseason it can be done. But with lighting, you will have really springy, you'll have fall, and you'll have baseball players out there until November. So I, I just think that maybe there's other options that yeah, I want to hear that, and there's not near as much ground to move, would do this. There's not a lot of reshaping. There's ground to be moved or ground to build up or something to, to get on your green dish. There's not near as much ground reshaping. And then that's what it is, and your varsity and JV games probably played on that turf field. There's, we have the JV over here in the mud, and the varsity over here, turf, that's not really tangible to me. I'd rather see varsity and JV both playing the same game at some crunch times. That's, that's just me, but that's my thought.
You know, partly the one he's saying with, what I was talking about earlier was that it'd be sure nice if we could figure out how to, remember I said with JV and varsity, actually use build the good fields for the games? And that if we had them offhand, where if we did have the lights, then we could have back to that games instead of one's got to be over here and one's got to be over there, and that one's going to another school because we don't have the field and whatever. I've played double games in a single night with the lights on, so it's not like it's not possible to do. But I have a question, though, it is, I know it's more turf, and that's my word, but what if you want with this one here? But you still also still put the soccer field up here?
Yeah, we could do that. These are just examples.
I know, just sort of.
By stuff, you can have an idea that we're even involved.
Yeah. They're working a marching band.
So I do know that option number four had a.
Hold on one second, what did you say?
Option number four has probably another street that's a thousand dollars round company required that may not be necessary for this, for this payment. I think that needs to take into account that if they're going to start talking about that, it's a point of things. And we set what we're here for, which is, this is the number one priority that we need to focus on. I wasn't, I was kidding, I just like you guys.
Go with the weed.
Talk about the field.
Well, actually.
Next slide.
Actually, Trent. We've had to work very hard on maintaining trust. Very hard. And it was easy the first time, a little harder the second time. And it was dang near impossible this time, and like it or not. If you look at what people voted for in the last election, and you went and polled them, did you vote yes because of turf fields? Or because of new auditorium seats, or because of a cover over the patio? I'm going to tell you that there's a whole lot of yes votes up in because church fields, and that there's a number one priority. That's it. And if there's a number two priority, there's huge bitterness among many voters about how major ninety-eight turned out, and they voted for it, spent a lot of money on it, and the money was not and that's a legislative thing, it's not our fault, but the money was then reallocated because schools didn't have CTE programs. But there, to talk about CTE once, twice, three times a loser would not be you're done. And, and I'm not going to walk around the community and say that those two things didn't get that.
I'm going to trump thinking security, though, that was our next one.
Sure, but on this election, we didn't talk about that. We talked about turf fields and CTE and other things, and they're all important. I'm not trying to bet, those two things are the loud noises in a lot of the electorate, and, and so we need to make sure that, I know the US family say you want to move on it, and we do, and I'm happy to work on any one of these things. But those two things, like it or not, if you're going to do any work for schools and can monitor and maintain board members' credibility, I think that we're, we're committed. So there was a lot of hard work.
So if we go with this option here, would we still keep the softball field down here the same as it is, or would that that would be, just with that option? The softball field that's currently there would become JV softball field. Also, just to be clear, these aren't plans, and we're selecting this one or that one. Or if we're going to have lights on or not, and I will share my spine thing, because when we talk with the high school teachers and we say, okay, we want you to dream and think about what you want, we end up having conversations about where we want to have our lights on. It's instead of, you know, the size of the plan, and that's just human nature, and you guys are doing the exact same thing. Because it's exciting work, right? You have plans something like this, so it's, it's okay to get into the weeds. But just remember, we've got to step back out of the weeds, and we're need to get some things prioritized. Here's the challenge, and Bill is exactly right. He said, these are things we want to do. We said, in bond, valid, that this will help pay for these items.
So they don't want to stumble out of the market last two years.
We, we may. We, we know, and I, I'm trying to make it really clear, these are final priorities. And that eight million dollar bond doesn't cover the nineteen million dollars of things we want.
During, yeah.
Right, and the piece that we also need to remember, we went for eight million dollars, didn't want to add anywhere further. Want to say, oh, it's going to raise your taxes, right? So we have to take what we have and figure out how we're going to get the rest of the fee like we asked. And, you know, I'm assuming that will be turf fields, it's a good, but I assume. So what I want to do is, go ahead and fold up the place mass. Certainly aside, if we're going to go through these descriptions, and I want to share how I'm planning on kind of walking you through. Maybe just as we go forward, try to consistent with the plan.
Good luck with this, bro.
I know.
Well, we'll make it, and you know, we shot lots of kind of, I just want to make sure that the three things that tell us that they're feeling on your book.
Yeah.
Well, on where, no, we'll.
There's some of these things. There's things that you can do step by step through maintenance, and they're saying that you just have to put the chunk out. That's why we're building the building. You couldn't but build one science from another time. But you can be, there, there's some of the things on this list that can be done outside of the scope of.
Absolutely, absolutely. So here's, here's what we're going to do. I'm going to pass these out. And we're going to start at the top. We're going to work our way down, going to read each one, and just give a, give a brief description. If you need some clarifying questions, then please ask. Jared, Jessica, myself will clarify as much as we can. Something that's important to note, that there's some of these items that there's no clarity on. For example, the fields. You don't know what they're going to look like. These are samples. But if you prioritize a field, it's number one, that's work that we have to do. How are we going to get those fields done? If you prioritize locker room upgrades, and we haven't decided what locker room upgrades look like, that's when we're going to have to have additional times down the top. Look, we have X amount of dollars. We can do these three things, that what this group wants? Yes, if it's, no, we want to have I don't know about it. And we don't have, we don't have money for lockups, right? We're going to have to find some way to pay for that. But that doesn't mean we're not going to get it. This means we have to figure out another path besides bomb dollars to complete the project.
Did you say our contingency is six, about? Oh, five, five. And the tiny number is two still at the bottom of it.
Closing the five. Closing the five, yeah, so we're about there. So we have to be careful, and we'll be eating into the the additional resources. Exactly, okay, li- likely of that five, half that contingency, throw the waste, now we're at two point five. We still need to make up at least another two point five if we can.
That's why I'm asking, that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, and that's a great question, because that's why I don't want us to focus in on the dollars. If you look at dollars, go I don't want this one because I can't afford it, we're going to do this. We're, we're going to find a way forward. One way or the other, we'll figure it out. Okay. Alright, so we'll go through, we'll systematically step each one, hopefully not in the same detail as turf fields, but if we want to, then we can ask you to do that. Then we'll have some discussion. We'll have you break it, then Jessica's going to enter our rankings, and we'll take a look and see what averaged out, and also kind of what maybe was the low, the most often. And as a group, then you'll decide, all right, we're going to go with the average, or let's move these around, I think, really, even though this gave in third, this is really our number one, this mathematically came up.
Yeah, that could work quietly, a lot of shine in this.
That's why it is. That's, alright.
It was great now, myself, because when this finishes, let it receive.
And my, my favorite saying is, you know, about speaking. It's like, speaking, maybe just stay for a place. We are not. Actually, I might have, I might have a very. Alright, so let's start at the top. So you see, we've got ABC, replace condensing units in A, place testing unit in B, place testing unit in C. Condensing units are what create cooling. Having that a priority would add cooling to the system or. Repair. H trap is included and it's important to know, remember the separation between. An H trap system which keeps healthy air moving through and a cooling system, right? So A, B, and C at the top would be cooling, the next one there is cooling in the gyms. The next item is an enclosed connection between. The main gym and the weight room. After that is a covered courtyard, so off the back, so if you look at your map where it says cafeteria. If you look at the architectural drawing, there's that dotted line, that would be a covered area, so it extends seating. Um, outside, maybe a little bit, yeah, it's a little, it's a little warm enough. Um, built in bookshelves and thirty four classrooms, right now we have a minimal amount of cabinets and shelving, just would add shelving. I'm not sure if you need that or not, but that's something that we add on there as far as an adult. Um, replace fifteen exhaust fans, they're old, worn out and making noise. That's throughout the building, au- auditorium seat. Arbor replacement, that could be farced out, but I just kinda put that into groups, the reason why I put that into a group is if. Uh, A, uh, touring was high priority, just like the turf deals wants to prioritize, then we'll decide. How much we can. Um, locker room upgrades, mention that, replace single pane windows. New finishes in building B staff restrooms. B C classroom connectors, so right now we have a hallway, if you look, a hallway between the classrooms there. This B C classroom connector would have three classrooms on the upper end and two classrooms on. The southern end, if you look at the north, south, based on the arrow there. B C connector clinic, who put.
What?
Health clinic in the upper area.
Would that be for classroom, bathroom or more C T V and art?
Classroom, classroom, but it could be a lot. Um, auto shop classroom. Painting of class of building D interior. Replace the roll shop doors. Wood shop addition. The C T metal building. Tuner, new turf fields, field lighting. Parking lot lighting. Parking lot paving. Varsity fields for. Questions on any of them. And we have, we don't, a lot of these don't have. Kind of detail because this is just a part of.
I kinda have a question about C T V metal building. What is that?
Yeah.
I added that. I believe that's at least in my last conversation. With the E folks. They want a large building that has big rollers, sort of, but then. Who also do, uh. Beast mechanics and then. Kind of a whole, whole farm. Close to. The green highlighted areas are the areas that we mentioned in the ballot language, our areas that. The bond would help us. I wanna make sure you.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Yeah, can you show me, I mean, explain this a little bit, the B C connectors for the classroom at the clinic, exactly what you were talking about.
Sure. So if you're looking at your drawing, it's the. The. Hallway between. Old building B and. Building C. You would, the classrooms would be a, you need three classrooms on the top and two classrooms on the bottom. Or some combination of that. We we figure, we used to figure a classroom was four hundred thousand dollars, it's probably five hundred thousand dollars, and so it's easy to do the math. The other one is the, uh. Clinic, and I believe the clinic would be just the upper side or the north side, the gable side. That would be, uh. Our student clinic. And there'd be a, uh, collaboration between our health. Health operations, the E program and our. Student base health.
So if you did pick the B C connector. Could that include? You mentioned two rooms on one side, three on the other, could that include the C T V help? Air or the same? Right, or like, does it have to be, is changing two of those rooms into? The C T V? Oh, I clear.
One, one is the. The student based health center, so there's more clinical items placed in there.
Right. Oh.
So. I I guess if if it was just.
Depending on what level they go to, clinical space can be. Twice as much easily.
Okay, other questions?
You know, and I, I know that tech lab and the science, different ones, that there were different things from biology to whatever in each other categories. Um, so I do have one question, yes, when, cause I asked you earlier about, we start working on. Putting in even the medical field of any kind from being nurses, doctors, or anything correlated to it. And see about this afterwards, is you know how we have the space between the science rooms? And also the first, like, you know, classrooms, that we had to put that space in there.
Yeah.
If you correlated those couple of classrooms there and the last science room, for example, was the biology one that might be correlated to the medical field. Don't say that, today then be connected, not that you couldn't shut the doors when you didn't want to. But then I have to worry about that space being in there anymore.
That space there is for daylight and there's a pretty significant slope right there. And so that's how it's.
Yeah, I remember it going up.
Yeah. I mean, anything's possible, but. Those are, you know. Well, your ways, but.
Yeah, I know, and I, I like to use every square inch that I could find.
Yeah, yeah.
I was just saying, if they were located close to each other, they'd have accessibility if you. Needed to go, I mean, then they're a little easier, that's all. Well, um, so I have a question, if if you took out the infant toddlers and preschool area and moved it, well, just not worry about where that goes for right now. Is. Could that area be? Fairly easily made into the classrooms that you were talking about having up above, which is between B and C? So that you have all the high schoolers in one section?
You mean the connector?
Yeah, like the classrooms that you were talking about adding. Between B and C originally, so if they were down and rear rooms down a little bit, move them there. Yes.
It would, and you know, we can look at the drawing and say, well, it's easy, just, you know, connect with. Um, and it might be easy, but it's, you know, it's down to dollars and cents in here. And. I know that our current. Preschool area. Is requiring additional upgrades. Because when you start making changes to a project, you have to bring everybody, everything up to code. Uh, and these, this is nineteen eighties code, not two thousand and twenty three code. So that's, that's a big part of what we're ending up doing in. These.
Which even if you move them out of there, you still have to make changes to the area for almost anything else you have to do too, though. I mean, right? So, you know, you were, I'm just gonna say, even if you made those into math classrooms, I'm just throwing that out there, but. You'd still have to change the walls and different things to them, because they've been designed for little people at this point for a while.
It's different levels of fire protection, so, um, on our eighty prints, it didn't say preschool and infant. And so because of that, um, were required to, now that we're using it as such and labeling it. Bringing them to a special fire codes, we're adding extra doors, adding extra fire barriers, um, all around those rooms, where gym and classroom were required.
Okay, so if we, cause I had suggested before to you again today, is if we took. The infant and toddlers and preschool guys out of there and moved them here above the connection between B and C. Where then also the parents would have very easily secured access to the childcare area. Then it would be a little more. Well, I'm not gonna say it wouldn't be still spending money, because that's going that way, but it'd be cheaper then to be able to redo these ones in the center where the childcare is now, because you wouldn't need all the things we were talking about. It's still the same.
The the bigger question also is. We have to be very careful about. Designing changes. Because they impact lots of the infrastructure of the building, first of all, and then second of all. You make a change and you'd be amazed at how many thousands and thousands of dollars you spend and hours of delay you get. Because you have to wait for those changes to all be drawn. And yet it's. The same problem I run into all the time, people say, well, can't we just vote this? Yes, but if I've already taken it to the engineer. They have to understand they just added three thousand dollars to his bill. Because he's changing twelve of the fifteen pages or twenty pages that he drew. And and so things have a cascading effect and. And so I wanna be very, 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 very. Conscious of making any. Changes at this point in the game unless they're. And either save money or provide a benefit that exceeds the cost. Those are just. It's kind of, we're there and the plans are done and the permits are approved and. Schedule's been built. I I know, I, you know, I have teachers come to me and saying, gee, they're gonna do this and this and this, there's my space and. I'm not really happy with, you know, why don't they do it this way? Well. Because they made a different decision than you. And and that doesn't always make friends, you know, the email I got last night is concerning and and I'll ask the question. Not here, and I that's probably the answer I'll get. And I'm I'm comfortable with that.
Um, they're. Going to the main balcony gym, there's a large one there, there's a small one in the opposite valley of the gym. Um, and then for a longer. I believe there's still, might be some, um. It's gonna be, still a lot of security on this.
Too much. Huge on the constant. But something that will affect energy.
Yeah.
Check for the windows.
But. Now, I can't believe that's, yeah, yeah. Uh, with a little. Yeah. Yeah.
Probably the bigger issue is single pane windows replacing, and it's just to forget the single pane windows. Yeah, we can rename them to open windows.
So the things that Jared, you're talking about that need to be done now, now because we've now had the regular infants, toddlers, little guys. Was that many included? And what we said, the original before we gathered last night, or did we even know that to us?
Yes and no.
Okay.
Sorry. Uh, yeah, you know, there's, it wasn't, it hasn't been cursed, but that's what we're, it hasn't been combined or bought. Currently with our current LOAs and, uh, but we do have contingency for those things.
The prices, plenty for the. You could, for the.
So we're supposed to rank them one. Right? Yeah. Are there any other questions? If not. Please rank them one through. My word.
Oh, wait, another round? Well, no, because. I'm a business owner and I'm modeling a house, so you buy it off section, but actually they spend and you do them all at once.
So.
So my H back guy coming.
Right.
Yeah.
What I'm asking for is a priority because. Our job. Jared's job, the engineers, the architects and contractors are to help figure out how to do all that. And our job is here and how to. Make it happen. So that's all in their skin.
Need to tell me, but do they have a reputation every time?
Listen, we're talking about what's here.
Yeah, but I can't prioritize one with me.
Your five ones, we don't, you clearly, please, I think you. That for us, one, three, twenty four, because we're gonna prioritize your one priority, yeah.
That's not gonna work for me.
You can do it in your, in your groupings now, you split.
You've been, we ended up costing ourselves more money if we just. Oh, now we're gonna do that for the three about trying to.
You're not giving the decision thought. Most.
I did, like, I would attack your HVAC. Then I would attack your parking lot and. You would take the biggest one over here and you might take turf at the same time, and then you look over here at your CTE and your metal and just start working down the list.
That's if we can have everything we ever wanted, you know, but if we're.
Like, I fill the number six, I fill the number five.
But if we're trying to decide if if we have like nineteen million dollars gets you that. We don't have nineteen million dollars.
You wouldn't do that.
You, we would say, of this list of things, what are the money? You're probably gonna get your time. Maybe. But we need to see what one through twenty four is to determine what that top and this for us to take, they get it this way. What is, so H back is first, so then. What's the most important part of the building to have a chemical cool, that's your one, the next. Then you go, okay, then it'll be your next part, then that's your two.
That's just getting too much.
Right.
Wait, but I don't think none is, like, I'm, yeah, it's. Cause I installed. That's why the question. I think you are stacked. So I just, I just wanna know if I can organize something, do they have a location they're thinking about for the C T V that I don't?
You're, she's got. Uh, any, that's not.
Yes.
We're not at that stage.
Not how they can get that process, you're supposed to keep that in mind, that's right. I don't know, it's not, it's not, I'm on that one, I guess, or we're gonna do.
For you to.
Absolutely. Not me.
There you go, you're a lot of.
Let's go see, there wasn't enough time to call.
You didn't spend that.
The work is, I'm not sorry. Make really fast train. You see, we should have. We have a copy somewhere close by, I have that. What we actually wrote for this board.
Green item on there.
So that everything, so I just, I don't remember the C T V metal building, if I notice this out.
That's C T V, I already, I already, I highlighted the C T V building, though, and I'm extending to what they're hoping toward, but C T V is. You can, you can do green on all of them, correct?
Well, see, there you go, you could have preserved some numbers here, at least.
We're doing fine. I, I, I asked you today.
Right, I'm different. Really like. All right. Someone a three, two, and then all of a sudden, you're literally trying to hire every single part anymore. They've got another way to, I always question yourself, I go, is there another way to do? I told them. Versus a classroom that's attached. Another shop.
No, but.
Different set. This funding or.
And then I know that's.
Yeah, is it?
Put this together.
So things that are. This is the time I'm gonna give twice. It didn't, it's got that. Versus, what are they doing? Any parts for this, I will sit there, we make an argument, they'll be open, this has been paid over, that's. Don't, you have, you see it's one year, look at C T V next year. That's, you know, the, we'd like to have all the rapid bit active windows.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't tear anything out of my house and refurnish it everywhere when I'm not, I probably shouldn't, but. It's the way it is. It's. And and so. That's the way, the way. Anyway.
I don't mean mentioning political issues, so.
Some of these things are working, it's expensive.
It's still a significant.
So they could be done, or they could be done. We can see all of them. The natural. It's strong. All definitely. All that in life is.
Oh, really, we need to.
Certainly, that.
And that, so you know what I mean?
Stationization, you know, that's.
Mine is my crush, soda man with twenty questions, we were all under, we're.
Anyway.
Now, you would get in trouble, probably, so you was all.
Yeah.
In every stack.
I'm still right now, just for a second.
I tried to switch with that. It's like you, they can leave this stuff. Why am I reading our opinion? I mean, I wanna know, fantastic, I'm cheap, they wish, I'll sign the walls, it was a thing in the world, you know, that. Thing in the world, you know, that.
People always wanna do something different. You can find case right, you can just sit there. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's probably the right size and shape to put a built-in. I I you know, I do a lot of encouraging. Okay, if you do all buildings, and I find this, when they saw somebody in there, I guess so, but I was. I I like some, I just don't like.
I see that, right?
But I'm just, I'm just. When you and I were getting all this, we. Now you have to get kids padded paths to go start. All right, compared to. When do you cross the line between this child labor, we like these kids are in workshop, totally decorate. Their workshop, the way they look, but it's wood and paint and, yeah, we buy this pie part of that part. But we have to sit there and pay somebody who likes maybe we don't have a lot of.
Still don't have.
On that one. Yeah, well, it's not, it works, it's almost sacred.
What I know you're seeing miracle order.
Anyways.
That that just go with what it feel like. Whatever the heart just gets touched on.
Well, I needed to know about the metal building, because to me it was the ones about it.
You tried this.
You will be included in it.
There's twenty-one things. Twenty-four, twenty, twenty, yeah, oh, shoot, I forgot that it's. Yeah, I had scribbled right there.
So it wouldn't be that.
Where's the twenty-fourth?
The product kind of lunch clients.
Oh, thanks.
I didn't say.
It was helping me to have your numbers then when you were still talking about the numbers. Yeah.
I'm at thirteen, fourteen.
Counting from one to twenty-four.
I know, it's complex. Oh, there it is. Oh, no, that's it.
If I did, I did a couple of.
I wanna go one one. Can I do a lot of one one? It doesn't have glasses, that's true.
And I didn't just, I don't know. Maybe passing it was like, it's thirsty.
So I have a question. Is that, is that a separate structure from the actual cafeteria itself or is it?
It's an end, so if you look at your.
Need to be done at the same time as finishing the cafeteria, right? Or whatever you want, yeah.
I.
Ideally, right? But if you've already put in concrete, you've also messed up yourself forever on bolt later. I mean, we could do it, but.
No, we 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 made sure that we secure the building and that our area is still.
You know, you know how wide that just is? Somewhat being, because it looks like it's only half of the size of the science room. So we know how wide they are for me to have a number. I don't need the long ways, I mean, sure, yeah.
How far it's so, you're called sixteen feet.
Sixteen feet.
Or twenty-five.
Why was this trying to set those? Do we have any kind, is there any kind of a, if we don't put that there? Is there any kind of a projecting to keep our name from constantly going in?
Yeah.
Some have at least to you. So if there is some rain going this way, you'd be knowing. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, there's not an oning, but there's a render um, and for that, and it's not an energy. Usually water has, plus there's the lock off pad, so it would touch a moisture.
The only reason I'm conscious of that, that space is the exact same direction that my front window door is, if the rain goes this way. Right, I mean, it even opens up. Really good idea was for that part of the.
Oh, yeah.
It's.
I uh, I considered education, I played or taught.
Just because I have opinions, don't mean they're right, but I have.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Probably not the same as everybody else. Well, Jared. I promise I asked. The risers from my high school going to the middle school and back, they said, we didn't want to try. Uh, or at least turned to ask to take it.
Oh, the.
Yeah.
Current name of the body program.
He was just wondering if you go there, they're not sure, and then bring them back on Tuesday. And I said, well, I would ask, but. I'm curious, is the question protection on the gym floor? Or is it protection difficulty improving? Would die probably moving by the band, it's all there, right? Because there aren't really many full thousand. But he he just said, I asked Jared about it, he said, no. But I think you may have misinterpreted what he was asking. He might have come to Jared. Oh, hold on, that's why you guys were like, you said you talked to Jared. Oh, okay, yeah. That might have been, yes, because he just said Jared and I said, I'll I'll ask. I mean, the only Jared I've heard about about taking things from high school, middle school back and and being in the gymnasium with huge pictures. You're the guy has to finish the floor, I do the stuff and worry about. There was one, they're not. Part of the same, right? The same. Yeah, I, I don't know, he just said that I don't know. Just, you know, they're aware. Yeah, so I don't know the answer to this question for you there, but I thought I would ask you. My my first question is. Because he's, there's six sessions in Minnesota. Yeah, that ramp board would be the most, I mean, it's one, one, it's next Tuesday night. They said that there isn't, yeah, they're they're not big enough to do. Wants to do it. You you don't need to sit here, jump.
Big enough. Are you on the bricks?
I mean, I could find out.
Uh, that's something who wants. He should talk to his teammates, make sure it's okay with them. And then they know to get a report in and.
Yeah, and they just may know I wanted to bother, but. You know, anyway, it's all right, I I I thought it was when people said Jared, I think. You, I told you, Jared. Like, you felt this, Philip, you're gonna. I didn't know who's. He's not in the admin side. Now. I I I don't, I'm not sure that he really communicated correctly the question, but he brought it up to me. I got it. I was. So Mel and Jim. Anyway. So it. It just occurred, you know.
Again, I can.
So anyway, clear trench is a bar and like.
Yeah, but I'm getting that now. I'm getting, you know, I'm a scrub, so I'm hoping.
And they had a couple, so let's get a load, he's gonna drop later. It was getting around him.
It was awesome.
Just joke about it.
That's what they need, and then these kids stay down here.
Down to the courthouse at like seven fifty.
What was crying?
And then I throw him in, because I thought it'd be. Sure, one of the. But it was almost always. The wish, when you swear, wasn't like a run sound.
Yeah, that's the question. We had a really good conversation.
But I used to speak that, well, first time I did it. It's because I knew that I was working on my mom, so it's too right. So I really, same guy, then it shot come on, because I wanted to do this. Every time you do a good one.
But they're all personal.
The message, right? When you get, you don't get, they had, you just get, you didn't want, now what are you doing? And that was.
My my neighbor. She she. But she knows all about her. And and. A message of.
Doctor.
Yeah. I didn't. Otherwise, it was strange, I don't think. That would be the good one.
You know, they're gonna chow.
You know, the main. You can remember that. It's not so cold, see the light last night, cars, she's down there like. Okay, you have two pores, two.
Of course, tires.
So we're.
That should be quick again. Right? No.
Yeah.
What happens if you lose? The other guys.
Flip through them on the field.
That's what we do with anything that's good, bad, or different, we celebrate that.
They say, we're just getting ready to see that song, that's why I asked. He's just going, okay. This is. But I'm not speaking back. Hello, everybody. Hi, how are you? Just for me that. I wanna, I wanna, I wanna record this. Yeah, so that's, that. Anyway, she enjoyed it and it was amazing and she laughed and I said, no. We've been friends for ten years. She's figured out, you know, I I just get these calls. Random times. That. It's literally accident. Of course, she wanted to talk about. She was talking about, I just think here. These are, she did, I I I can see her shaking her head a lot because she looked at me and. Additional costs. Or. And 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 it's all, by the way, after this, I had a rehearsal. If you call, I might not hear you because just I don't even run, it gets on. And I didn't, she called again. Well, plus. She's not able to tell his mom. So she, I mean, you know. She was saying, she's, she's been trying to rest, oh, that's okay, this is not losing her, I'm losing my. Not my surgery. Yeah, my, my, I think my, I don't. Uh, I wanted, what to be. The doctor called and said, after the best game, it looks like we can, so. You're at the plant. And your friend over at metal park, he was. It's not that. She said, if you might. Cause you grow scaly fish.
Thanks for.
The church. Humans. Um, so it's somewhere.
Can we, so we do. Well, that's cause wrapping up for, let's go.
Take a look at the next agendas for next Wednesday. Only one that. If there's any additions, any question. So we got our community impact award. And then the consent agenda, new business, we have our A F report. Then it's, like I said, it's gonna be a long meeting. Recognition of. Our senior and our society members, the inroads presentation. We got to chat. The school reports, we have a repeat update. From the middle school. We have the children's institute.
Read this middle round high school.
Yes, yes. But I believe it's. Yeah, shit, I I think the high schools are gonna become. The chair playing is the director of children's institute, that's our. Uh, preschool, who's that grade program? We've been piloting with them for grant. We have our student representatives to the board, we're gonna talk about that. And then um, we got those policy updates. Just uh, potentially a business report, and then I have my. And then I have a review. Give them the link. Of the meeting.
Would be your call there?
Do we.
I've been here until one. Scott, do you want all six problems per day when people score them this this morning?
This is all.
That already.
Yes, and we have an executive session prior.
Oh, that's her name.
We do. All right. And we also have an addition. Of. The strategic plan presentation team first. By a, they'll be able to help the large group. I think. The, uh. Other. That area. A member or two of that team going to the grand concert. Be.
I have a question. Can we, can we get maybe by that? The graduation. What time? Yeah, we asked you.
Yeah.
That's what they just said. It's just because there's still ice left in that. It's sort of off level. Takes it sort of off level on waiting inside. I know, because we've used to have practice at nine bright early and then we have practice at one o'clock in the afternoon.
Oh, yeah, I'll skip.
Something works better than, yeah.
I would say I don't have a graduation memorized.
No, it's not changed it too.
A little bit, but like, yeah.
It's happened in June.
What? Yeah. I, yeah, well, I have the broad strokes, like, like, memorized, just like the individual detail. I'm like, okay, I have to, like, check, go check that, you know? I'm in charge of the graduation.
Yeah.
You know, at time and show for practice?
What, I'm, you guys show up for practice, I think at the podium.
Yeah, if you can tell us what time practices, that'd be awesome. I'm reading you right now.
If I don't have the podium book, uh, tonight, it would be because I have the senior assembly script and not you.
So that's okay. At the twelve thirty, it's required practice. Right. Yeah, ten to twelve thirty. And then speaker is twelve thirty to two. And then the. Actually, so that's us. We usually go at twelve thirty. If I remember right, that's we do our thing with them. We walk in, they're gonna do their speeches, we can leave at any time. If you even want to go. Some couple of.
So the. The highest, the lowest number would be first.
Yeah, great, he's in the colors. The darker red, at least. At least higher.
So what you're looking at, right, is the average color, the mode is the one that's. Most often selected.
Jerry.
Okay.
Don't we give some of these things to?
We say, I know what we're talking about. Thanks, Jerry. So, I mean, the formula brings back the value. More than it's cast.
Or that, so.
So for place condensing units, building A. Two people. But that is. I want to be. And then the lighter green. Had three people, so two. New turf fields, three people. Put that of priority one. And in the wood shop edition. That's the darkest green, four people identified that as the eleventh priority. Other wise, if it's blanket, two people. Gave it the same.
Okay. Yeah.
I don't use both from left.
Yeah, I was hoping for, so when you're looking at, actually, the number of votes. Is maybe more helpful than the mode.
Okay, which is why I need.
Yeah.
I started.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Because what we want to look at, right, is, okay, we can average it out, that gets direction, maybe order one through twenty-four, but. The average may be thrown off if somebody gave, for example, turf fields twenty-four. And everybody else gave it one, it would rank it really low, so you want to be able to see that, but I don't think anybody did it.
I'm not gonna give you anything, because that's what I would say about.
So I, I care with the number of ones one. Through three. You're doing. What was that? Like at this top on the merge of one.
Yeah, so this was either for second or third priority, and so. Replacing units and building B two. Uh, it was ranked as the second priority by one person and the third priority by two. And so then any other votes for that was less than.
Yeah.
Just, could you sort it by the need words with two being at the top? Is that the lowest number?
Yes.
Okay.
And I can also unhide the individual scores of that. I'll take this, I have more crystals, as I have a lot of things where above ten. We'll get through.
Well, but it also provides very clear direction under. Yes.
Yeah, but there's not even ten or ten.
And there's very clear to see, I can assure you that those ten under ten are going to take the vast amount of resources.
But as we're going through, right, we might look and say that we were able to figure out a way to. The. condensed replacing differently, so that allows us to jump to something else, so.
The part of it is, there's a confusion of adding. Regional patients for CTE kind of. Does divide up the vote. So. For two things in there. We're out there. They're interconnected. But I, I just look to me like you now. Parking lot, maybe before. Turf fields being ignored, nor do you know. You're kind of conditioning units, getting things cleaned up in the buildings.
Yeah, it's, it, just look at the colors, it sorts out how. So. I think looking at this. And this isn't a perfect science, so there's. CTE pieces in there. So you're kind of trying to. Figure out which one. Right, we look at it, see, okay, we know CP is up there. Already been to the ground, what exactly.
Everybody.
Yeah. Well, there's some things that, and I think that you probably shortened your list here. When the main median and mode all come together. You probably have. Fair assessment of the. And that. Maybe, I don't. Ready. I remember if you had the. Like a big enough CTE that will build. You would. Could incorporate those other things with them, so.
Yeah, well, when I spoke to one of the teachers, I was kind of impressed by them, they wanted really large buildings that. You know, maybe three days. So looking at the order. That seemed like a reasonable. Priority list. Turf fields, subsidence. You know, building A, B. HVAC work. A part of law, including human, who would see, covering courtyard, I see woodshop. The building. Add together in there, just well as the auditorium seating. So I, I think. May also that we have some priorities here, you know that. CTE is. The piece.
Well, so one of the things I can do is a field lighting. That's when you're doing constructing. If you're laying conduits or you're not turning the world. And you're digging up there and making a mess anyway, conduit is relatively inexpensive. Place that to where it would be needed, you can, you can do a design for lighting. Get conduit to where you need it, you don't have to unwire it, you don't have to put it in those spaces, you don't have to do anything, but you can get yourself ready to go. And that might be. A. A worthwhile step without a very lot of money spent. And then you say, oh, we're gonna have a big old fundraiser, but it's lighting out there for the city of. Starting from a creation for soft alternative, but. I'll be fine, but. We need light bulbs. You get, I mean, start talking with CDB, other people, you know, you might get some. If you budgeted just for getting that. Ability to do it, but I, you know, once, once the things are all finished. It's really expensive to then add. Just don't think about conduit because. Turn on the roll. I really want to do it.
I mean, there's something that I think, uh, the boosters might start by not at the bottom. Maybe they want to attack the varsity field or something for the scoreboard. But. That'll help us to work.
And we do that. That's all, that's all.
Right, so.
This is, this is varsity. Those.
The top, yeah, all right.
So. I want you to take with this, is there something that seems way out of whack this order that you, uh, you feel?
I just have a question, is, I mean, maybe it might on, on the replacing of the fifteen exhaust fans. If that was way down the bottom and you couldn't do it, is that going to have any kind of effect of making all the things we have at the top? Not be touching the way they should? All the condensing units and our, I mean, everything. You know, totally separate from it. Except by cooling in the gym, I never want to see your biggest. Here in public.
It isn't as bad as it was when I used to live there.
But it is the graduation, so they ever did the graduation back in the gym. Like you would want to.
Yeah, no, I say, you know, now that I don't work there, it's probably not as bad. They're not good there.
Yeah, I'll call. So this was something that we'll communicate with this, because your priorities change. That was moving forward and as we gather more information. Share it, so orders. Know, there's, there may be a pathway to get two of these priorities. That are maybe one step below this priority. So this is gonna be kind of a document that will keep her hot.
So as we look at this, it's very clear. Thank you.
On the west, yeah. We in this position will get prioritized that to put it higher on the super. Patient. That's. It's not. We can, and I don't even want to do it right now. But. If we did, we wouldn't get as much as we want, unless we make some. But. Once, once again. Yeah, more affordable options, let's get it in place and moving forward. And. Function. And we still have these other priorities. That addition to. So what we need to do is to go back, find out timelines and find out costs. We have to have a conversation as far as what you want as a board. And then concern forward. So one piece that I think is important to, to remember is that we're, it's a year out, the schedule will get. Stalling. Right? So if we went right now and you're out for a year from the end of next season. So we would miss next. Season.
So they're missing them anyway, we doubt you.
Well. If.
Yeah. We're trying to go out, so now we decided not to.
If it's scheduled properly. We can do the work that's dry. If we go right now, we end up in a case where we're trying to excavate it, but it's not. So there will be some, I, if the board is saying, stop. We want to start them for right now with this, then start with.
Well, I think what we should do. The lighting in a place that I should find that. We need to give direction to. Let's finalize a plan. And let's get a schedule. So that we publish and say, this is the plan. This is the schedule. And this is when we start. Because this is when the contractors are available, they're dating, you know, we have to wait our turn at the cookie jar. And, and so people know, and we also can go out for actual bids and can get people committed. Uh, and have contracts so that. A, a year from now, you're actually ready to go, and seven year from now, okay, let's go get a contract, that's your secret. Then if we can get going and get the work done. Early on, and you say this is our number one priority, but we don't provide how it's gonna go. Then let's get it figured out, and that also helps Jared plan for, okay, what am I gonna do for next year? Am I gonna put in a lot of work? If you're gonna use the same varsity field that you have now with a JV field, for instance. And then you're not wasting time and money to put some additional grain in it. If you're gonna tear it all up, put some else on it, you're just giving Jared things to do that he'd rather do something else, so. There's, there's. And, and you also need to involve that athletic community a little bit. See where they are, there may be some booster folks, things that want to. And, you know. Help you a little more, although they're gonna say, hey, I mean, the power's been, uh, right now. But they have, they have some designs, they're sending help. Let you. So that they would do a house, so they're gonna build. I really think that we should. Maybe in our next meeting or something, maybe give us a little bit of an idea of what to do, but. We should. Have an action item to at least. Direct you to. Proceed on our top three priorities, whatever they are here. That we go procedure one, two, three, we should say, hey, let's start getting. Get to HVAC. I mean, Jared, I could have the bids tomorrow on the HVAC because that only means a year from now when he gets it done. Am I correct in that? If we gave it, if we gave the direction right now and get the HVAC. Done, and how long would it take you to replace the, the work that you need to do to actually get people to come into it? Could you do it in a year?
It depends on. Very happy, it's.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's, that's, no, but it is, but, but waiting. So that we pass the bomb on, on a couple of our top two or three priorities. Isn't helping the supply chain issue, and he is just, you know.
Yeah.
It helps determine where we're gonna.
Right.
That's, that's the big. Yeah. So, yeah, my, my, since the. Final priority list, not. This is the bomb list, right, right, coming on there, so we've got, see that, we, waiting for it. All right. See, which, that's not gonna happen, but all that stuff, then that eight million dollars.
I don't think you can go beyond your top couple priorities in there with, with promise, because we don't necessarily have the money for the top couple.
But and even at the extent, if we have a couple of ways to get there. I mean, absolutely. All right, so we can start working on that. Get a plan to go forward, but I did want to show you. Here again. Turf fields, though. This is. The crisis. You've seen.
Yeah, you can take that and rear.
And you can take that and reorganize it.
Yeah.
That was not true.
So, so can I ask you a question that I didn't think about earlier, when looking at the pictures of the, the current girls softball field that we own? If we make that turf, that field gets used to be lots there. A lot. Is there? But then put into within that being sure field as a different route to walk around it on a consistent basis by. Just about everybody from graduation to, you know, football field running out to go. That kind of thing, that's what I call melody lane that runs from the gym door to that's all bumpy and.
Yeah, the. We have the fire right now that runs that.
Where, where is that sort of, let me tell us.
Yeah. Right around the outfit.
That would stop calling. So where do they?
That goes up to, so if you go from the corner of the restroom. So it connects to the parking lot, right?
Okay.
But then it goes from there, it has a sweets and, and comes up on the L of softball.
Okay.
On that white call out, goes all along the back of D, B building, there's a hammerhead that goes into that green space between, right by woodshop.
Okay.
And then do you see the, the brown basically for the baseball synthetic field there? It's a ten foot wide, but paved five foot wide path that runs all the way to the end of D. On the backside of D, we're getting thirty foot wide gravel path straight all the way to the. And then the. Down to the next drawing. Where this synthetic turf field is, there's gonna be an actual path from the backside of D that goes all the way back there to the. Recess.
That's my mother asshole.
Yeah, five minutes.
Because that's what I kept thinking that to me, the rec center was way more, almost easier to come through there than anything along those remedies. That's so squishy. Over there, compared, compared now, where they have a direct access. Yeah, can you have both? I mean.
There will be both.
Yeah, right, okay.
So both of these plans actually have the baseball field where it currently is.
Yeah.
So softball field will be popular.
So the, the, this pass around to. And so the green highlighted areas, the ones, those are the items that were in this most recent bond. And I told those down in Green, and you see the top, it's made it cost of work. See that number, and there's a fifteen percent. Over here. Over the inflation, I'm sure it's, that's right, and then there's contingency back. But if you look all the way across, it's eight, eight point two million dollars. In a perfect world, we could take everything from that bond, put it here and say, check, we're done. But as I keep trying to say, this is the final priorities. We have right around four or five million dollars in contingency. If that contingency is used up in. Other items besides mechanical work in building B, then we will have to take five to six million dollars out of this eight billion dollar chunk. And that leaves us with two million dollars. And that's why, as I said, at the time, we have other ways for to figure it out. We've got, you know, so we have some contingency, we have some interest. There's also premiums that you get if you sell your bond. And then when you get to the tail end and we're looking at it and go, gosh, you've got everything done, but we didn't get that covered courtyard that we wanted. We have to dwell for. I just, I want to make sure it's really clear. We've got, we're hoping that we don't have to tap into that contingency, so then I can take care of the mechanical work that needs to be done, leave this. Mechanical work, right, is the electrical plumbing, what else, things, H trap. If that's able to take care of it, then we have more from this bond, spend down our priority list, that's why I wanted to get us that priority list. And then we can start, you know, knocking off those things with other.
One thing about covered area courtyard, if that's. Remains a priority. So what a cost to auditorium seat cart for replacement. The general public probably would rather see the auditorium, but the way I see it is the auditorium could still be done. Stepwise or whatever, or that awning, you're out there and you put cranes over the top of things and, and smashing up stuff, and it's, it's just kind of nice. It's part of the building, so if that's, we're either gonna do the awning or we're not gonna do it, but it's not an add on later without a lot of expense. Or add on to seats in the auditorium, you can, yes, two, ten hours in a year. But when you're looking at the overall budget, we're looking at the seat, it might be three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace the seats. But it's fifty thousand dollars to recover. You might decide, let's just recover, what if I say, I really need to, for the last time, I sat, I'm gonna sit pretty right, and also let it cover.
We want the traditional metal covered, you know, or this is really nice. Claw, but like, you know, the canvas circular covered areas, that might.
Jerry, Jerry can't climb.
No.
I, yeah, there, there are temporary years or so.
When you're inside the cafeteria right now, if you look out towards the stadium, you can see that we'll have. All the graduates come right into that space inside the cafeteria and outside the covered area. Visiting with family.
It's already designed, isn't it, for like a town leaver?
It's designed where it's quickly walked and chased us back or whatever, that's, it is. Although I don't think we can get everything that we want, so if it's. Ten thousand dollars for a park that we place every five, ten years. That may be.
It rang nine.
I have ideas. It's okay to shoot.
You forget what state you live in.
Anyway, we don't need to go all out, you know, kind of like you.
Hard work, but kitchen cabinets, too.
Keep it simple.
Third day.
So it's exciting, it's, it's still gonna be a challenge. And I can say it's like, I want to make sure they understand where we're at. And we're gonna have to have more conversation on how we're gonna get this done, but I think we're all committed to getting these priorities. We probably should set up a tour for the board of the. At the site here.
Oh, yeah.
I think in a transform, you could do most of it.
It would be something that you didn't get a clear right out there. All right. Thanks for playing along.
Do you have a feeling of a sense of direction to us?
Well, we, well, we're gonna start with the turf field of your day.
I mean, that's, that's something.
And we, we.
Sure, that, like, I mean, I mean. Yeah, but we're always getting these people that are saying, yeah, you're big and switch me, and I, 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 I just, I don't want to hear the above, but I just want to, how long would it do? Thank you very much. All right, how long will you?
Those are derived from cooperative uses, usually. So whatever. I can, I, I can follow.
Month's order.
This is their police abuse agreement, where there's a multi-year national contract.
So this is a really good estimate, and it's not like, oh, never mind, we went up another million.
It's fixed.
Okay. This one was in November twenty two, and this one was in January twenty three, and I'm like, well, a couple months past that, man, so where are we at?
Especially when those aren't agreed, have reached the debt limit, that is a possibility. These are strong.
You just keep it.
Don't you rock one thirty pounds, you.
So it's.
I expect it to be shot, I don't expect it to be, this is what the price will pay. What I don't want to have is like a, oh, by the way, we're, you know, twenty percent higher than we are in Japan, so it's that's no possibility, it's, it depends on what you're looking for. Okay, because these are like, compared to like, you know, and our, these are our work, this is like Jay and Grant's.
Oh, sure, no, I get that.
Yeah, I mean, it comes down to all the details of how it could go up over twenty percent, just depending on the details that you specify.
I love the natural grain that needs to be at every board conference, not gonna cause any issues with our home.
If you want study green to the corner of the outfield.
So, so this.
Badges added, you want heated seats in the bleachers, you know, what I'm saying, you lay a hole all year round, that's what I want, outside of that, aesthetically or anything else, with their details that.
If, if you ever go by the middle school. On an evening or on a weekend. It will be rare that you don't see people out there, if you go out there during the day at lunchtime or whatever, rain or shine. There are kids on that field, that was the best investment we made in the middle school by far. For the, the goal of, of these things is to get kids participating and being active and being outside. And it is a community resource that's, that's, it's spectacular for the middle, I, I, I'm just really impressed all the time that there's, you know, the baseball. Little League, Babe Ruth, everybody, our varsity, guess where they practice this year, all their practices were over the middle school football field, because track was used in the high school field. And they come over in the evening at their lights, they're been there late at night, that there wasn't lights, so it's just a lot that these things do. For the community, that, then people just don't get it.
So, so where do you go from on this part of it, though? Where are you gonna go from here?
Which one would I go for?
Well, where do you go? Like, we told you to go to work on turf field, but where are you gonna go on the site?
I'll sit down with our team for having, instead, work, take some community input.
Work with your boosters and all.
I think it would be, I think now it involves some, don't you, the, the groups? Yes. A little bit.
Much lower project, though, like if they want to do your such.
I, I would not be asking them to help support and. Pay for it anything, I would. I, we've gone through multiple ideas, we've worked with baseball coach and shared these, he's been out with us, I think, for the last. Time, like we did this wrong, so we've gathered in.
Okay.
And we can get some more input, too, but it's, the next thing is, what's the ability, we gotta finalize on what a plan is. You want to come back, you can say this is what we're looking for.
Man, I, I really think, yeah, I'm gonna hear from this baseball and softball coach, okay, what do you think, which, which of each were you on these?
I think it would be a good idea to give a perspective of the players as well, especially our underclassmen, J D and varsity players, and possibly some of the middle school. And like, I would call a rank player as well, because they are the ones that are going to be, you know, impacted the most by what we do here. So get their perspective as well, I have to say. Because they're the ones who are gonna be playing on these fields and dealing with, you know, are any possible shortcomings of them or any poss, or any success that they have with them?
That's quite a way down the design page, so I don't, you know, most typical school baseball player don't really.
Well, it is, but I already pointed out with Scott today that I said, if Scott can be far enough out, because I know that girls definitely weren't hitting on that third baseline in that same kind of foul ball, but rip through the south of the window. So, you know, just little things like that, but, you know, thinking about.
That's what that is.
Yeah, different angles.
Well. Right, what's more interesting than all the houses that are potentially coming on Jerry Johnson's property, is it's going to impinge on. I, I want to, well, what I want to do to get this established is what we're doing, if they, the company's health and development is, oh, this is a baseball.
And, and no, we're not gonna change our design for you.
We'll communicate with people about next steps, and as soon as we have a little more prep, start leaving the board. I, I'm not a field trip contractor, so I can't give them the exact next steps from the days, which really even ask. Just getting these back at all or no.
You're swaying. You want your sport.
Anything else? Also, oh, by the way, so new fencing backs, not the.
Just see that, okay, I had a cost on the back, did you?
Yeah. Yeah.
That, that is.
Well, there, there needed an option for, but they're not even needed an option to, or whether, yeah, there's, there's costs that we already have existing things. Yeah, I don't understand, how does the coaches feel about that? Back on how we are.
That, yeah, they're just. You know, it's a, we're starting on, and it may be some, I agree, with changing where the field is, I mean, I don't, we have that stage shows, some goes.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I.
I, I think. A full, full circle back.
And now they know we're actually talking seriously. Well, we were talking seriously before, we're just sure, like, sure, change, I mean, there.
Yeah, I guess, that's.
I didn't see them. We can usually, like, you know, that gate that would be the.
Yeah.
Soccer.
So maybe even that's the small one, size will feel the outfield in baseball, you, you can play soccer on it.
You can't.
It's difficult to explain. Let's, we'll circle back a couple. Couple of math.
I, I've played softball. No, we, we, we have seven, I'll say the practice in baseball.
Now, you still have.
Westland, Westland.
Is there any chance that you think, because, yes, we've owned this property forever, but making a change that could be a noise effect. To neighbors, such as putting field way out here, that's gonna be louder than football game was back here, we think we have any issues getting this approved to be way out here. On my own, huh?
All right, the chanting.
I mean, I know we're laughing, that's louder when it's right next door, than what's, what's down here.
Potential lighting, yes. So that's another.
Well, you can show my direct lighting, not to show it on the field today, it's not too hard to put it on the field as well.
It's, it's, it's a lot, and you might just like, like, just buy all this property, and people, I just don't want to sell.
And these.
From a recipe perspective.
And stuff like that.
Or that, right there. That was, yeah. That is currently.
And then they put it in, it's like.
So with, is there a potential they, the Jerry Johnson property, we have to put out a text. Because no, we're too far away, so.
You could this.
I would say contractors, but that's.
Yeah.
Although it doesn't, like, near as skinny here as it is.
Still trying to figure out why we can't let her maybe help us out on that, that are not her now, but the, you know, if it sits long enough, that narrow strip. They admit to all stuff that isn't true. They're starting to realize that, that maybe I, Jerry couldn't afford to give it out, partly because she's just been crushed. But Danny, or just.
Other than that, we, we all got it.
Yeah. Apparently, didn't.
All right.
Okay, do you, Jerry?